Okay, so the time is now five o'clock. Good evening and welcome, and thank you for joining the February twenty five, two thousand and twenty five Policy and Governance Committee Meeting. I'm Jonathan Briggs, Vice Chair of the Committee and District Two Board Member. I want to thank you all for joining us today. For those unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded. It can be accessed on the PGCPS YouTube channel for later viewing. Now seeing that our Chair for the Committee is here, I'm going to pause it before we get to roll call and pass it over to him to take over from here.
Ms. Atley, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Moss?
Present.
Mr. Briggs?
Present.
Ms. Willis Schreger?
Present, and I'll be on camera soon.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Che Jackson?
For President, we have a call.
Well, the call and present the Policy and Governance Committee meeting will come to order. The Chair would like to, we're going to move to adoption of the agenda at this time. But the Chair would like to inform the public that Agenda Items four point two, which is Policy nine, three, five, four, Board Members' Voucher Reimbursement of Expenses, has been removed from the agenda. This allows the Administration additional time to review and refine these policies based on newly received information. Further discussion will be necessary to ensure the policies comply with legal requirements. If there are no objections, the Committee shall adopt the February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five meeting agenda. There are no objections if February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five meeting agenda is adopted. We're now move to one point four approval of the meeting minute, the meeting minutes. If there are no corrections, the Committee shall approve the January twenty eighth and the February sixth meeting minutes as distributed. There being no corrections, the January twenty eighth and February sixth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes is approved. At this time, we'll move to Item two point O, which is Public Comments on Agenda Items. Registered Public Comment Speakers can be live, pre-recorded using video, audio, or written communication. To our public commenters, you have registered to speak in a public comment form where the Board of Education will listen to your comments but will not address them. You will have three minutes to make your presentations. Speaking time may not be relinquished to another registered and unregistered individual. You may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be muted, and you may be removed from the meeting. You are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, principal, superintendent. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move swiftly. I believe there is one live speaker this evening. Ms. Beatrice, now this was Beatrice DeJager, which is a student, period products policy.
Good evening, Board Members. My name is Beatrice DeJager, and I'm an eighth grader at Kenmore Middle School. I'm here today to advocate for the implementation of public schools provision on metro hygiene products requirement. I'm advocating for the implementation of this bill as part of my Girl Scout Silver Award project. This bill requires school districts install dispensers in bathrooms and provide period products at all middle and high schools. When I learned about this law, I looked in every girl's bathroom in our brand new school and could not find a dispenser. I do not believe that PGCPS has done that, and I would like the Board to investigate this. I sent a questionnaire through social media and had a response from sixty-five students from twelve PGCPS middle and high schools. Here are some of the results. Thirty-two percent of students said that their school did not have period products available. Only sixteen percent said that they could get period products from bathroom dispensers. Thirty-nine percent of students said that they had missed school or left early because they didn't have access to period products. Many students report that a specific teacher was kind and bought products for students with their own money. And ninety-eight percent said that it was important to have them available in school. Many students report that even when dispensers aren't installed in bathrooms, that they are always empty. When I asked the PGCPS Administration how the law was being implemented, I was told to talk to my principal. I will do that. But the lack of access to period products is not isolated to one school, and this is a countywide issue. I have been told that there is no official board policy on providing period products and that a memo was sent out to principals in twenty twenty-two. Memos get lost and forgotten about. I think that the Board should implement a policy so that students, parents, and principals know what the rights and responsibilities are. Principals should have the resources to make sure that the law is being followed. I'm asking the Board to do the following. Ask PGCPS facilities to check that all middle and high schools have dispensers and provide a list of students, of schools, where dispensers are needed and get those installed. Provide specific funding for the schools to stock dispensers. I also ask that PGCPS provides a way, like a QR code, for example, for students to report when dispensers are empty and need to be restocked. An empty dispenser on a wall isn't very useful. I will submit this written testimony and include the link to my website that has all the students' comments from my questionnaire. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your public comment. It's always exciting to see our students too, so thank you so much for taking the time to join us today. We will now move to Item three point O, which is our legislative update. We'll move to three point one, there are two pieces of this tonight. So the Chair, and this is the Blueprint Implementation Update. At this time, the Chair recognizes Ms. Welsh to introduce her guest speaker and present the Blueprint Implementation Update.
Good evening. Tonight, we are fortunate to have with us Dr. Kara Libby, who's the Director of the Strategic Initiatives Office, and she has brought her team with her, and they are going to provide us with an update of where we are in implementation of all the blueprint requirements. So I'm not going to take their time, I'm going to let Dr. Libby move forward with her presentation.
Good evening. Could we have assistance with the PowerPoint? Is it possible?
Cindy, will you be able to post it for them?
I'm sorry, my system was frozen.
Thank you. So first, I'd just like to thank Board Members for your continued support for Blueprint, especially to testify in Annapolis. We truly appreciate your support since Blueprint was actually introduced in twenty nineteen. Yes, and we can go to Slide three, thank you. So at the top of Slide three is our link to our current Blueprint Plan that was completed in July twenty twenty-four for submission to the AIB. But along with that plan, we had several components that were also included that had to be submitted between July twenty twenty-four and January twenty twenty-five. Are you able to click on the link that says L A A Blueprint Plan Components? I don't know if you can enlarge it. Thank you so much. So you can see that Prince George's County has submitted all of our components. I'm going to quickly just describe each of the components. First, of course, the completed plan. The completed plan was based on our twenty twenty-three Blueprint Plan, and I always say that's like our, that was like our baseline data. And then the twenty twenty-four plan, we had to say what we were going to do and how we were going to do it. And the twenty twenty-four plan is in place until twenty twenty-seven. The another component was the Question twenty-three, which deals with our budgetary needs and how we, how we are going to allocate resources. Because as you all know, the money follows the student at the school level. And we have one of our strategic partners with us this evening that's going to talk more, going to discuss more about the resource allocation. Our Question twenty-three was so great that PGCPS was asked to present how we came about developing that question at a state CFO meeting, Chief Financial Officer meeting, back in the fall of twenty twenty-four. Also, as you know, we have the Career Ladder. The Career Ladder was developed with partnership with the University of Maryland, our Center, the Center for Educational Innovation, and they have been assisting us actually since twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen on different initiatives within PGCPS. But the University of Maryland really took on and helped us to develop that Career Ladder, but also in partnership with PGCEA. And along with the Career Ladder, we have the Maintenance of Certification, which was a negotiated increase in salary for the National Board Certified Teachers to keep their status who are teaching in low performing schools. So that was another component that we had to submit. The ten percent salary increase at a station was signed off by our Superintendent and by County Council. We had to, we had to ensure that the teachers in PGCPS were receiving a ten percent salary increase above the negotiated schedule between July twenty nineteen and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. That was submitted. And you all know we have a literacy plan, pre-K through twelve literacy plan that was completed and submitted to MSDE and the AIB in September twenty twenty-four. We will also have a mathematics plan that's due June twenty twenty-five, and that will also be pre-K through twelfth grade. And then finally, the last component was our Career Counseling MOU. We have career counselors in all of our middle and high schools, grades six through twelve. Our partnership with our career counseling is with the Local Workforce Development Board and Prince George's Community College. So they are helping us to implement career counseling in all of our middle and high schools. Thank you so much for sharing that link. And you can skip to Slide six, please. Thank you. So we finally received approval for all of our components and our plan on Thursday, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And AIB said that they would release our FY twenty-five funds. So each LEA had to submit all those components before funds were released for FY twenty-five. And of course, you can continue to find updates, information, resources on our website and on the AIB website for anything pertaining to Blueprint. Next slide, please. The AIB, the Accountability and Implementation Board, had funding to have each LEA who wanted to participate in having a strategic partner. We have five strategic partners for PGCPS this school year. We have a partner for Early Childhood, Career Ladder, for our career, college and career readiness, resource development. And right now, I'm going to turn it over to Winsome because she's just going to give you a quick update on how each partnership is helping us to implement Blueprint in Prince George's County.
Great, thank you, Dr. Libby, and good afternoon, Board Members. It's great to be here. So our partners, and we'll start right there with Pillar One, our Early Childhood Education. We are partnering there with WestEd. And within that pillar, this focus of that pillar is really around pre-kindergarten expansion. And what we found out through surveys with our private providers is that they need help applying for the Maryland State Department of Education Pre-K Expansion Grants. And so through, again, surveys, WestEd in partnership with us within the district are working to support those pre-K providers, to apply for those grant funding so that we can have, again, more pre-K programs for students. And those grant, those grant proposals are due in April. For Pillar Two, which is our High Quality and Diverse Teacher and Leaders, we're partnering with the National Center on Education and the Economy. And for that particular, particular pillar, the focus is on the Career Ladder, a big body of work that the district is expected to do. On that Career Ladder piece, we do have a plan that's due July first of this year, too. So that's part of the discussion. Of note is that Prince George's County Public Schools is actually one of two LEAs within the State of Maryland that's piloting the Level Four on that Career Ladder, which is helpful to the state but also to other LEAs within the State of Maryland. So we'll go to the next slide for Pillar Three. And on Pillar Three, here, Dr. Libby already mentioned them, but in Pillar Three, we actually have two partnerships, one with City Works, and they're really helping us with the career counselors. As Dr. Libby said, each of our middle and high schools have a career counselor. Within the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, each middle and high school student is expected to have career counseling. So this team works with City Works, the three partners, again, Prince George's County Public Schools, Emploid Prince George's, and Prince George's Community College. On a weekly basis, we meet together to discuss the programmatic elements and to ensure that this work is happening in our middle and high schools. And within that same pillar, we have HCM Strategies. HCM Strategies is helping us to coordinate across all the work streams within College and Career Readiness within the district. They're working with us on a regular basis, regularly scheduled meetings are happening with them. They've done interviews with all of the College and Career Readiness Teams within the district, and they're currently compiling that data into a report that's going to be submitted to us in March. Alongside the work that they're doing discreetly with Prince George's County Schools and the Pillar Teams, the, these strategic partnerships, partners, they're also conducting statewide community of practice on a monthly basis where our LEA members attend, but we also have LEAs across the state coming together to delve into topics deeply connected to the work that they're doing in each of the pillars. So as we go to the next slide, I'm going to turn it back over now to Dr. Libby, and she'll talk about the strategic budgeting and resource allocation portion of the pillars.
Thank you. So we truly appreciate all of our strategic partners, but one of our best partners is WestEd, and Tara, I'm going to turn it over to her in a few minutes. WestEd is helping us with the resource allocation. And as you all know, this is very deep and in-depth, and it's times confusing. So she's been helping us to look at what we are currently doing and what we need to do and how we're going to move forward. Also, Winsome mentioned community of practice. WestEd has also had community of practice sessions for all LEAs across the state. They had one to focus on the resource allocation for English Language Development students and one for special education students in how those resources are being allocated. As we mentioned in October, when we presented to the Board Subcommittee, the scope of work for WestEd is to help us to plan and implement, to help us to develop a communication plan, and to help us with community engagement, that community engagement plan. And WestEd is helping us with all of that. Now Tara is really going to tell you what we are trying to do with resource allocation.
Thank you, Dr. Libby. Hello, everyone. My name is Tara Burkhild. I met some of you this last fall when I presented when we were kicking off this work. I am a Project Director at WestEd and a Senior Education Finance Associate for the Resource Planning Team here. My team at WestEd provides technical assistance and evaluation to states and school districts on topics related to school funding, accountability systems, and systems alignment. We are really excited to be leading the work that's supporting Prince George's County Public Schools around resource allocation and strategic budget support. So as you know, this is through a technical assistance grant funded by the AIB to support Prince George's County. We are plugging into Pillar Four in particular, and I'm wondering, would you mind going to the next slide? I'm sorry, I just tried to make sure I have all of my notes up correctly. Right now, our team is working on, sorry, we are plugging into some, some three key areas, and I'm sorry, that was actually on the previous slide. I got my slide notes mixed up for a second. We are supporting evaluating the current budget and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-five as it aligns to the requirements in the Blueprint, specifically around those minimum funding requirements at the school level. We are also looking at, seeing how schools are allocating those seventy-five percent funds down to the school. We worked on an analysis this past fall with the finance team to determine how many schools are currently in the fiscal year twenty-five receiving that minimum funding required. How many more are going to require additional resources and in what areas? We are also conducting right now some additional analyses of the FY twenty-five budget to develop some data visualizations and some trend analyses. So our work is to help develop some resource allocation recommendations for the future. The timing of this support unfortunately kind of ended up where we're not really plugging in to support FY twenty-five change, or FY twenty-six changes, that budget is before you, you're working on it. We are hoping to position ourselves to support the district with kind of longer-term recommendations for fiscal year twenty-six and beyond. We're looking at trends in staffing by building, for example, average salaries for particular positions, staff to student ratios. We're looking at what is in the budgeted versus actual salaries when we're looking at the student-based budgeting formula, using all of that information to evaluate how those different data points align with student needs. So for example, what's the portrait of a staff makeup in schools that have higher-than-average populations of students who qualify for English Language Learner Services or students who qualify for compensatory education through Blueprint? We want to know the average tenure of teachers in those high-end schools, how do special programs influence the allocations of staff and funding to particular schools? So kind of answering lots of different questions about how we're currently allocating resources so that we can then think about recommendations going forward in the future. And as Dr. Libby said, we are also working on developing a draft communication plan for the district to help get out that message of Blueprint. We have provided some best practice guidance around communicating budget-related issues. Generally, we have some FAQs that we're finalizing that can be used in district communication materials. And with this work will come supporting the development of a community engagement plan to facilitate ongoing resource allocation and planning conversations with multiple partners. And now, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. Thank you. We really kicked off our work with this in October, meeting with the Finance Office to understand the current processes for allocating centralized versus school-level costs to support that minimum funding analysis. So over the next month, in December, January, we conducted our analysis of the minimum funding requirements to identify where resource shifts need to occur. We provided some draft findings to the Finance Office in early twenty twenty-five. And as Dr. Libby mentioned, since December, we have convened four community of practice meetings with the other school districts that we are working with in the state. We're also supporting Baltimore County, Caroline County, Howard County, and recently, we just added Dean Anne's County. These COP meetings are an opportunity to discuss concepts like targeting investments for English learners and special education students. In January, we focused on looking at how we're going about that minimum funding analysis, looking at disparities in spending by school. And then earlier this month, we had a session talking about communicating Blueprint changes, kind of best practices for how we communicate out budget changes, that sort of thing. Right now, our team is really focused on developing recommendations for shifting how the district may consider allocating resources like staff in future budget years post FY twenty-five. Like I said on the previous slide, there are a number of data points that we're looking at. We're looking at what we found from the minimum funding analysis this fall, the staffing data, and we have plans to present those data visualizations, graphs, charts, findings to the district later this spring. And we are also working on that draft communication plan and corresponding materials. My hope is that we will have templates, we'll have some guidance materials. They will be hopefully useful for you as Board Members so that you can communicate out to other partners, you know, families, staff, and the community about Blueprint. And then the next slide, please. So there are some upcoming policy decisions around Blueprint, as we know, many, many policy decisions, but I'm focused specifically on these around resource allocation. One of the most challenging parts of Blueprint implementation is that there are so many moving pieces. You have lots of strategic partners supporting you. We are focused on this particular area. The challenge is coordinating all of these things across multiple departments in your district. Some of this is owned by different folks in your district to oversee, and there is a lot up in the air at the state level, obviously, that influences how you all can do your job and what you need to do to keep the ball rolling with this. So unlike Esser, Blueprint is not a huge sum of money that's coming in all at once. Instead, it's a slow rollout of promised funds implemented over several years. And to be honest, I don't know which is harder for you to plan, lots all at once or a little bit over a long period of time, they both have their challenges. That being said, we know there are some upcoming policy decisions that will influence budgets in the upcoming years. We're going to see changes in the way PGCPS allocates resources. The law requires a minimum funding level by school. Our work together will hopefully help inform the development of the FY twenty-seven budget that will get more schools closer to meeting that threshold. And I know I mentioned this in the fall, but we don't want to shift around resources on paper only. There is a way we could make the accounting look like resources are going to a school by, you know, tagging things a certain way, but that's not going to bring about change for students. We want to make sure that resources are going to the schools and the children that need it the most. And so to do this fully, it really is going to take more than one budget cycle. This isn't something that can just be switching a couple levers in the funding formula. This is going to be a long-term plan over time. Right now, the formula as it's structured requires some segmenting of cost. You know, there's X amount for English learner students, and we don't want to think about things in those silos anymore. We want to think about how funding can serve multiple students across multiple groups. And so hopefully, the information that we bring to you to analyze this spring can help me think more across schools, across student groups, rather than just thinking about funding as it comes in through those blueprint buckets. There's definitely likely going to be shifts of staff between schools in order to get to this minimum funding amount. To better align staffing with student need, it means that some schools may gain some positions, some others may lose as the student-based budgeting formula is adjusted. And because of that, it is really important that we make sure that that communication plan includes how we are talking about these changes to principals as well as labor groups. We want to make sure that everybody is on board and understands how decisions were made about these changes because we want everyone to be Because we want everyone to be on board with knowing, you know, this is the goal we're trying to get to. This is not meant to be punitive. This is meant to be done in a way that is truly targeting resources to students and schools that need it the most. So that is all I have for my presentation today. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have that I am able to answer.
That's the end of our presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh, Dr. Libby and the team, colleagues. This is an opportunity for, I think, for a round of questions and then we'll decide if we need a second round. Board member Boozer Struther, board member Briggs, board member Walker, uh, in that order.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, there's, there's just so much. First, let me just say that, you know, I've been with you, with your team from the very start and the progression and the implementation with fidelity of the blueprint is something that we are PG CPS proud of and our colleagues throughout the state have been complimenting and watching. We are in the midst of bills that are about to undermine, that could undermine this if passed as is. And of course, per pupil funding, uh, the community schools, uh, funding and pauses that are in SB four twenty-nine and then I'm reading Senate Bill eight-five-two. And you just presented our, you know, absolutely, you know, celebrated middle and high school career counseling program, or I have a bill here that says the whole thing should just be eliminated. So, Dr. Libby, do we, do we stay the, do we stay the course? Do we stay the course no matter what happens with these bills? I mean, I, this bill can take away the college and career funding. Do we grab the funding otherwise and keep going? I mean, this is, I have to give a little bit of context to my colleagues today because I just came from the state board meeting where some very unkind things were said about this board and our use of data, our understanding of data, our taking in of data, our moving with our superintendents and our leaders on that data. And during the break, I challenged the leader of that state board to tell me if we were not supposed to take in the data of the Kerwin Commission and move this school system to adequacy and academic results. So I come to this meeting tonight in, in one of my advocacy places because we cannot win no matter which way we go. So, Dr. Libby, is this plan moving the needle? And do we stick with the plan no matter what the law, that we figure out how to keep going with this plan?
Yes, stay the course. There was a meeting yesterday with internal PG CPS and the University of Maryland, and one of the topics was collaborative planning. Teachers need collaborative planning. That's part of blueprint. That's part of the, what they want to pause, not end, but pause. So that means they want to, it was supposed to start in twenty twenty-six, they, they, meaning the state government wants to push it out to, you know, further years and then continue it until twenty twenty thirty-two. So yes, stay the course. In terms of career counseling, the bill from the way I read it, right now, the funds are a pass-through. So we receive the funds and then we, we pay PGCC and Employee Prince George's. I think the bill is saying that either all the funds come directly to the school system or the funds can go directly to EPG, Employee Prince George's, or, or to PGCC. So they, they are not saying get rid of career counseling. They're just trying to change the model. But yes, please stay the course. Thank you.
Board member Struther, Boozer Struther, I'll give you another round in just a moment. I don't think you're finished. Uh, board member Briggs and then board member Walker.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Libby and team. And it's, I think it's good to know that we have someone who has like a, is really looking at this thing broadly around what we need to do budget-wise, just given many of the implications that board member Boozer Struther shared, as well as I think what we know to be true. But the nice thing is that I don't think we necessarily need a law to tell us to do certain things and states can continue to, I mean, uh, school districts can continue to do what they want to do. But this just bolsters that, that, that responsibility. I did have a question for Ms. Bergfeld because one, it was really good to hear the presentation and to know that you all are looking at this specifically for like the FY twenty-seven budget, which I think is like a, just, I think you mentioned this already, but there's a lot happening in Annapolis, as been mentioned, um, that's going to change things. I did want to know, um, so the first question was just around like, how long is the TA? Um, I know that I'm assuming AIB is like partnering, but how long is that grant? Like, what, how long will you be partnering with PG CPS?
Through June thirtieth.
Oh, okay. All right. So this, the presentation that we're going to get is going to be the end of our time with, with them, with West Ed. Is there like a extension or continuation that AIB has with any of that?
Not through AIB. I've not been told that they plan to continue anything. Obviously, we are happy to continue supporting Prince George's, but it would not be through AIB.
I see.
They, yeah, they, I, the, the AIB didn't have funds, but they are looking to possibly continue with some of the partners.
I see. Okay.
Nothing's, nothing's guaranteed right now.
Okay. Um, and then I just wanted to know, and I guess this is really Dr. Libby team or Ms. Bergfeld, but like, what, what's the research question that you all are answering? I got the idea around like the scope of work that you're addressing, but was just curious what that is.
Sure. That's a really good question. I mean, I think right now we're trying to understand how our resources currently being allocated. And so we're, the data we have available is FY twenty-five. So that's what we're analyzing. How are resources currently being, being allocated in alignment with student need? And so looking at how the SVB formula, like the proportion of funds that go through SVB, the proportion of funds that are being centralized and then deployed down to schools. There's lots of, because we're looking at the minimum funding and that was part of our analysis, we see, sorry, I'll be quick. We see sort of the accounting side of it as well as how it's reaching schools like, so long answer is how are resources currently being allocated as it relates to student need such as certain student populations?
I see. Okay. And then it sounds like implicated is some of the systems and the way that we do things here.
Yes.
All right. Thanks.
Board member Walker?
Absolutely. Thank you guys for this presentation. It's always so great to see the work that we're doing in PG CPS and you guys really articulate it well. So I love this state of course, we're all in. You know, I know a number of us were super excited when we heard data visualization. That's something that we've been asking for forever and fifty days. I think that this is an opportunity, an amazing opportunity to show how the blueprint has really shown up in PG CPS by the work that you've already done. Like how we planned and how we've executed. And so this is more to Dr. Moss. I think that we have an opportunity to intertwine that in this narrative that we're giving to our legislators because we're talking about the bills and the four points that we want to keep here. But what if now we use some of this information and told the story about how it really hits into PG CPS specifically? And I think a lot of what they showed here was really, really good. So maybe Dr. Libby, um, you know, I'm not one to give anybody work, but maybe if you were to think about it overnight, you could shoot us, um, like a summary of what you're saying so that then we can bulletize it and be able to tell that story. Like you've already shared it today, but we want you to craft the narrative versus us to think we are crafting it for you. I think that'll be super helpful in our journey as we try to advocate more and more because you're doing some awesome work. Thank you so much. The other piece I had was, can you talk to me in this last minute about what the data visualization is? Like, what would it look like?
Well, I am, we're still in the middle of analyzing it and I think
Oh, gotcha.
I think that's going to dictate how we present it is what we're able to tell you. My team, I, I imagine we have lots of charts and graphs. Probably the first pass will be in Excel to get an, like, first draft, get some feedback on what we're presenting. If there's an opportunity, we can think about how we could put that into something like Tableau that's more interactive. But it depends on the time and how much back and forth there is on what we found.
No, that makes sense. Just was trying to get a feel around from your perspective, what would data visualization look like as a result of everything you know right now, which you presented to us, but that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you also much for that round. Uh, we'll have a second round. I want to ask a question before we begin the second round though. Board member Briggs asked this question really around research queue. So I'm curious if the research team is looking at the rate of change that's happening, um, but also some predictions around some, some what-if prediction. So if these investments can continue at this way, how might it impact outcomes long-term? So looking at the rate of investments is coming from the blueprint, saying this is the kind of progress the district is making. If these investments continue, we can predict out in ten years, we could see this kind of success, right? So modeling that out with some type of regression analysis, they're saying, these are actually, actually statistically significant findings because of these investments. We see that these factors are contributing to success in a statistically significant way. And if these persist, um, which means these investments persist, we could see this kind of success long-term. Is that part of your research model, um, a- as you think about doing this work? And then secondly, I know y'all are leaving. I'd love for Dr. Libby to think about like, what does this mean for the work moving forward? But yeah, those are the two thoughts I have.
Dr. Moss, I'm assuming that question was for me. Okay. So, no, unfortunately, we're not able to answer your question about outcomes. So right now, the question is how are resources currently being allocated so that we can have an understanding of what shifts need to be made? Your point to studying that further, that's absolutely something our team can do. We have plenty of resources available to do those kinds of regressions and links to impact studies and outcomes. That's just outside of the scope of what this work is. But would be happy to talk about that, you know, in the future and how we could kind of bridge that gap to identify, you know, maybe there's particular investments that you would want attention and, and, you know, looking under the hood on a few particular investments. We are definitely well-versed in impact evaluations in that way.
I know you all are. I'm pushing it here.
Did you want me to respond?
Yeah, I, I, I know this seems like a resource that's going to disappear soon. Um, I got too excited only to learn that it was disappearing.
So correct. So when the AIB last school year asked each LEA, who do you want to partner with? I wanted partners for all of my areas, but in particular, resource allocation. Cause again, this was the, the, the part of blueprint that is ever-moving and it's hard to understand and it's hard to keep up. So what West Ed and Tara has been able to do is help us to, to understand what the state is asking of us. And as you know, Chief Howe and her team, they don't have the dedicated time to just focus on blueprint. And it's enormous. I mean, I'm just giving you a snippet of some of the things for blueprint. And we talk about career counseling. We talk about the career ladder and the funding for a career ladder. We're talking about pillar one and the resources we're going to need for space for pre-K. And it just goes on and on and on. So we would need the assistance to continue with resource allocation. If the AIB, if they say we're going to have funding, the first partner I'm going to ask for is Tara and West Ed to come back to help PG CPS for resource allocation.
I appreciate you. Well, move to our second round and I'll start with board member Boozer Struther and then board member Briggs and then board member Walker.
Board member Briggs had his hand up first.
Oh, board member Briggs.
Okay. Um, so I just want to say one, I think we're all in this. It sounds like we're all on the same page that there needs to be kind of a continuation of this. And that was really the question that I was going to get at was that I think beyond, Dr. Millie, if, if Libby, if you can speak to this, like beyond the study that's happening right now and the information that we'll, we'll gain from that. Is there the ability, like the scope of what the AIB is requiring part of blueprint? Is there latitude? Is there flexibility to kind of adjust to iterate on the information that you gain? Or is it like, everything is kind of a research-driven question based on stipulations that they have coming from the AIB? Can you just clarify like how that works in, in how the building on would happen?
So the, the AIB, the west, best way for me to say this is they put together a plan. They said, this is what the LAAs need, but they weren't really sure what we needed until we got into it, until they saw the plan, read the plans and then said, oh, okay, we need to do this and this and this. So again, it's an ever-moving target because it's like we're all learning together at the same time. And I've said it since in the past two or three years and you all have heard this. We're not just building the plane. We're putting on the wheels and the wings and the engine as we're doing the work. And that's why the, these partners, just these strategic partners are so important.
Okay. So, and I think you're, I think you've alluded to it, but like the flexibility that your team has to drive this. How like, how much does your team have flexibility to say like, this is where we're going to go next based on what information we've, we've gathered. I'm seeing faces. So, okay.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, we don't have flexibility. It's what the AIB is telling us to do.
Okay. Okay. That's good to know. Okay. That was my question.
You good, board member Briggs? You got twenty-eight seconds. All right. Board member Boozer Struther?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, specific questions, is the power school up and running, requiring the monthly reports?
It's up. I don't know if it's running, but it's up. So Lisa Howland team are still putting in the data. Because that's the other thing, because Tara knows, we talked about power school probably in November or so. And Tara was asking, well, how can I assist? And Lisa's like, we're so busy trying to do this and this and this. We, we haven't had time to put in our data and information for, for, for power school. They have since then. And again, it's an ongoing kind of thing. It's, it's really, PG CPS really needs a person dedicated for blueprint and budget. I'm going to be honest. And, and I've asked, I've asked, because again, it's enormous. And to really understand exactly what blueprint is asking and what the AIB and MSD is asking up, at, asking the LAAs to do in terms of blueprint.
Yeah, I, I definitely appreciate that. We, we could see how those conversations can progress through this budget cycle and as news comes out of Annapolis and the county council on funding. And, um, I think we, that help is needed if we're going to go into, if they're going to send us into a really volatile situation of the billion-dollar cuts over eight years, we're going to need just as much help to readjust to going back in time as we are, um, as we would moving forward as the plan was progressing through twenty thirty-two where we would be at adequacy of the programs and the funding, um, for our students. The other question is, um, in, in an opportunity to address, uh, data, um, today with MSD, the expert review team reports. So I noticed that the very first ones, I think they actually were calling them pilots, which included Bradbury Heights and International High School Langley Park, where it happened to be PG CPS's two schools. Those reports are up on a website. They've been up there quite a while. We had many expert review team, uh, come through our schools before the end of the last school year. None of those reports are up. So we, I challenge that if you put pillar five on this board and then at the same time you criticize this board around our, uh, use of data and not put up expert review team reports at the same time, we have a serious problem here. So how does this board get the expert review team reports?
So I've only received the two from the schools that were visited last school year, the two schools that you mentioned. The other reports, the, the expert review teams began in October, November for visits. I have not received any reports from MSD thus far. And the way MSD set it up, it really goes, everything really goes directly to the principal of that school.
Well, there were a whole bunch last year and I know Cesar Chavez had theirs before the school year wrapped up in June. So I know there's more reports. So you know, the, this is, you know, this, this partnership. I- it's almost like our success. There seems to be a desire politically to diminish our success and our momentum in the data. And we know that the MCAP data RILA, PG CPS contributed a high concentration of poverty community schools up. That is disproportionately us in city of Baltimore. We're heading in the right direction and to the, to the predicting data point, we have that in the growth, the growths for school that we've tracked for MCAP that we got a lot of credit for in the education press, as well as this data that Dr. Wright shared in October. So I think we're tracking the data and responding. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Board Member Walker? You're muted, Board Member. Oh, there you go.
Yes, there it is. I had to find the, um, the, the mute. Hey, listen, thank you so much. I think Board Member Boozer Strather, we, I have so many questions just for her, from her, but from this meeting today. So that's just an offset of, uh, pieces that I was going to say, but the second one, I was going to ask around budget and what does budget help look like, but you did say that today. So maybe we can make sure that we're clear on what that ask is so that we can go back and, um, into, try to intertwine that. Maybe it, I mean, we're at the final stages for amendments, but this is something that we know that we, we will need. And I think the other one was a Plan B. I recognize that you all are working diligently just for Plan A, like let's move straightforward. And you don't really have time to work on a Plan B that might never come to fruition. But I was wondering if you've put any thought to budget implications in the event that the bill is passed, as is. So we know right now what the efficiencies or cuts that are recommended are in the blueprint. And as we go closer down this road of where it might go, I'm sure that there's going to be budget implications for us. And I don't want to say dismantling, but redoing, readjusting where it is that we thought we were going. And I think that that might be helpful just to keep those communications on open with the administration so that as they do the reconciliation, that that's in there, because that's not going to come before we vote on Thursday. But as you do that work, just keep them first of mind because we'll need that in there during the reconciliation process for sure. Makes sense. It's more comments that I have. Okay. Thanks, guys. Very nice presentation.
Well, thank you all for coming tonight. I certainly appreciated this presentation. It's helpful. It's very illuminating for the work that you all have been doing. Thank you for the work that you have been doing. Thank you for the work that you will do. Just seeing the technical assistants align to the pillars was super helpful tonight. So I'd certainly appreciate your work and we look forward to having you all back at the committee in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too, same. At this time, we're going to move to 3.2. The chair will recognize Ms. Welsh for the legislative update. Ms. Welsh?
Good evening. Cindy, I sent you something to post so we could just go through some bills this evening. Is she on? I don't see her. Oh, there you are. Okay, um, it's a little small, but, um, I don't, I know, we, I know we don't have time to go through all of them. So what I, and many of them were, I'm still waiting on fiscal notes to come up with positions, but the, Shelby had put together a list of bills that are coming up for next week for hearings. Perfect. Thank you. And so I thought I could quickly go through some of these just to give you an update. I do want to say that at the May meeting on Monday, they did discuss different, several different bills, but they spent a good amount of time discussing the Excellence in Education bill and what was the next step. And at this point, it, it seems that everyone's sort of all over the place. One of the things that I may want to do was to come up with some very like specific things that all the school systems, systems can agree to. And but then different board members said, well, that's not really true for our county and this is not really true for our county. And so there were some variations. So then they talked about trying to put together something that they would be sharing with us as well as with, uh, with the legislators, um, and I guess the governor's office. In the meantime, Pazam also is working with the governor's office to come together with some, um, some amendments to the bill. However, they're not in a position at this point to really share anything as well as, um, there's a lot of, I think, behind the scenes conversation going on. So no one wants to move forward formally yet until they gather a little bit more information, I think, in terms of positions where people stand, that type of thing. What they did share though, at the, at one of these meetings, Mayber Pazam, was that the legislators were pretty impressed with the fact that the superintendent's numerous, numerous superintendents, as well as boards, uh, that members came and testified and just the, the outcry from people, especially as it relates to the impact for the, uh, community schools and the, uh, foundation, uh, formula with, as, uh, for the collaborative time. Those were two probably of the, of everything, they were two of the biggest areas that I think impact them the most. So, um, but they, at, at this point, I think people are doing a lot of behind the scenes work to try to make some, I guess, see where, how far they can push on some of these things. Uh, as far as for us, I do know, and I have had even conversations with our H, Chief of HR, as far as, you know, their program they have in place, that, well, that they're going to put in place to, so that basically MSD is doing all the recruitment and all these other things and all the money they're putting in MSD to do these types of programs. And she is concerned because generally what happens in situations like that, it causes the local school systems to do extreme amount of legwork on their end to even get some money, which is not, is very different than this is your funding formula. This is what you're getting because everything is going to be grant funded. So you go through extreme amounts of work to be able to get what, uh, they're supposed to be providing you when you probably could do the job much better, you know, locally. So, um, I don't know at this, I can't give any direction because I think everyone's sort of at that point of trying to gather more information so that they can share that, you know, share the information. We do have a Green Street meeting coming up on Friday and I'm hoping at that meeting, because both May, Representative and the, the Director of Pazam were both there and they hopefully can maybe provide a little bit more information as far as what the status is for moving forward with that, that particular bill. Then as far as just, um, just quickly, I can go through some of these bills. There is House Bill 773, which has to do with, uh, student discipline rights. And, um, we are definitely opposing that bill because it's really is again, legislation dictating how, how, what disciplinary actions we need to take when students do different things. It's very, very specific. And of course, that's the role of, of both the Board of Education and the administration as we put together the Student Code of Conduct. And so that is not, um, an appropriate role for that, for them. The next thing is, uh, let's see, uh, can you scroll down? And I highlighted the ones so that we can, I can quickly get to them. Oh, the, okay, this is, uh, the Water Safety and Swimming Instruction, Content Plan and Reporting. So our, I had our supervisor of, uh, Physical Ed, she did an analysis of this and provided some, um, pretty significant information. She basically said that the cost of, to be able to do that, and, um, my, I have these pictures. I need to get rid of this picture thing. Anyway, the, the cost of that is around, uh, would cost us annually about $46 million. Now, the part of it is of course, just putting the curriculum together, providing the training and everything. But the biggest part is about ensuring that the students have access to the swimming pools. Was, because when you take together all that, the, um, transport, like transportation and working out different agreements with different pools, that it would be, um, uh, pretty expensive. So they, they, uh, what she said was, we would need at least three resource teachers to oversee each level and plan this program out and collaborating with parks and planning and other private entities. Teachers would definitely need training yearly and throughout the year, swim instructors. We would have to, we would need some swim instructors. Just because you're a PE instructor doesn't mean that you are necessarily a swimming instructor. So that would be a whole nother factor. Um, and then, um, in terms of, um, being able to get to, um, the other thing we would need substitutes. So as we have taken kids out of the building and going to different, and you, like, if you're taking a whole group of kids for a lesson, you may have to take, uh, not just one teacher, but a couple of teachers, which means you would have to have substitutes in those classes. And then the other thing would be that, um, the, um, the, just coordinating that the training and the substitute coverage, uh, that being able to get to the pools, and making sure the students, you know, were there and then they're safe. Also providing bathing suits for students who maybe do not have bathing suits. I mean, she was listing out a lot of these things. She shared that the expense could be close to 46 million for the first year and then slightly less because the, well, the training would, would be ongoing, I guess, but slightly less in the remaining years. So it is a pretty expensive endeavor for that particular bill. And if you have, I, I, um, Dr. Moss, I don't know how you want to do this. If people have questions and they want to, they want to ask them as we go through these or uh, just keep going and ask at the end, whatever you want to do is fine with me.
So if we could have a conversation about the priority ones that you've highlighted, I'll entertain a round of questions for the board members. This is one that I think is up next week. We've gotten some questions about. And so I want to make sure board members can ask questions about this one in particular. So just those priority ones, I think we, we certainly want to make, um, and, and a, a space for this. And this is one of those. So do any board members have questions about HB 1127? Uh, it looks like Board Member Walker. I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand initially.
Oh, no problem. No problem at all. Hey, listen, I, I had a couple of questions about this one. I know that we are revamping how we give fiscal note information. This particular bill was noted not to have a fiscal, um, note to it originally, uh, not for, yeah, originally. So I think that with this one, maybe it makes sense to, I did request a meeting, like maybe it makes sense to kind of hear where this particular delegate wants to go on this bill. So we can understand it a little bit more. Sometimes it's called perhaps to hear, like to read it and know what it's really trying to say. Because there's a big push and for some reason, a thought that already exists within our schools. I was wondering your thoughts on that, Robin. I know it's not the first year that we've had this bill in front of us as well. I don't know if there was ever a deeper discussion with the particular delegates about this particular one. We should remember and so thoughts.
I do know that we had, this, this bill did come up last year. And for, it had stronger language in it than it did this year, than, than it does have this year. Uh, because I think it's offering a little bit of flexibility and the pool usage versus almost making you, you know, you have to absolutely have a pool here and there, but it's still an expensive endeavor. Um, and I know last year, my understanding, because I didn't have this conversation, but my understanding is that there was conversation with the delegate related to the fact that and not because we don't want, you know, uh, water safety, because that's critically important. And when you consider where we live, you know, there's a lot of bodies of water around, um, but more because of just the expense to be able to implement the bill.
Okay. Um, well, thank you very much. I am, um, noting that we do have severe expenses is within deficits within our own spaces, uh, and recognizing that I also recognize that our scholars need, need swim. So thank you so much for this right here. I think there's just a follow-up on, uh, on this end. Uh, thanks so much.
Uh, Board Member Boozer Strather?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Welch. Who funds the existing swimming lessons? I know that a particular grade in elementary school, I think it's second, um, does go to Emmett, you know, Parks and Recreation Pools during the school day. And I understand that that is still happening. Is that a Parks and Rec budget?
So it is.
How many schools?
I'm sorry. I would have this information. So we did, we, we are involved in a partnership called Make-A-Splash Partnership. And it's with, uh, MNSC PPC, Parks and Planning. And it's for a subset of our second graders in 45 of our schools. Uh, and it's for this, this, this year, 2425. It includes classroom instruction, pool instruction and Parks and Planning facilities. Portions of this program are funded by Parks and Planning as they upkeep the pools, train and hire the water safety instructor, instructors, provide bathing suits to the students that show a need. Uh, at this time, uh, the schools provide, um, just the cost of, um, you know, buses to transport them. Sort of like, almost like a field trip. They're covering that cost as well as substitutes for the staff they need, that are needed. So our costs are not, not significant because it looks like Parks and Planning are, are picking up a big part of that training, of that cost.
All right. Thank you. So that's a little more than a third of all elementary school students that could have this opportunity in second grade if the program was at this size year over year. Okay.
You got 50 seconds, Board Member Boozer Strather. Do you have one?
Oh, only, you know, with, with Board Member Walker said about the, um, you know, the implications of SB 429, taking, you know, we don't have any more money for unfunded mandates nor for the mandates we're already trying to cover. So I know that there's some other bills that get deeper into needs that contribute to the academic achievement data that we are held accountable to. Um, so I think we need to talk about those a little more first.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer Strather. Board Member Walker? I think we may have lost Board Member Walker. Um, Robin, I also think it might be good.
Oh, I'm here. I'm so sorry.
There you go.
No, I might be in the woods. Sorry.
All right. Um, you want to try now? I see.
Thank you so much. Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is perfect. Thank you so much. Um, I'm ready to go onto some other bills as well. This will be my last comment on this one here. I was wondering if, because there's a third of the second graders that have this opportunity now that's already funded by Park and Planning. Do we know or is it to the bill proposer to check with Park and Planning to see if this is an extension that they want to have with the remaining, um, second grade population or third grade population, for instance? Is that them that do that work? It's for my own understanding.
Is it the delegates' job, you mean, to pursue it? I would assume so. I don't know if they're, they're even aware of this.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Cause I'm wondering if, okay. Thank you so much. That's really helpful.
You know, at this point, I would advise, if, if the, we'll move on to other bills, but I think, um, we should probably refrain from issuing the letter around this at this point until we've had an opportunity to talk to the delegate and offer this rationale. Robin, I doubt you've moved forward with a letter. I just, just wanted to say it. Uh, but at this point, I think the, the board, should just refrain until we have had a conversation with the delegate to explain this potential. Okay. Um, I think we've got like maybe two or three other bills that are really important coming up this week that I know you want to talk about, Robin. So I want to make sure you have, the board has, the committee has time to talk through those. So do you want to go to your next ones? committee has time to talk through those. So do you want to go to your next ones?
Um, I can get a um, yes. If you want to, um. I think, did you want to talk again about House Bill nine thirty five?
Yep, that's the athletic bill, right?
Right. I don't have that on this chart, but I can cer- we can certainly have that conversation if you would like to um um, talk about it, but it's not, I don't have it listed for um that one.
If you'll just give the committee an overview of what's happening with that one, and then if we can do delegate to various, it's two bills that have come up for review, just to voice over the new work on those, I think uh, I think we'll be good. Um, and then we can share this out with uh the committee, what you've already done around this work, if that's fine with you.
Oh, that's fine. Absolutely. Um, so I as far as House Bill nine thirty five, um, the um right now, it sits in the budget that that for this twenty twenty five school year that there would be twenty new trainers, athletic trainers that and specifically for the use of football games. Um, and at this point, um, I think they've been able to hire, oh, excuse me, I should say twelve athletic trainers, and they've been able to hire four of them. They, it's difficult. First of all, they said to find them just because there's such a shortage of athletic trainers. And um, they they didn't provide any figures, but I I went and looked up their job description and went to the s- uh salary scales and everything and basically looked at the middle of the scale, you know, because I know that generally speaking, you're you're going to get someone with, you hope to get someone with some experience. Uh, and just to be safe, in the middle of the scale, the salary is around eighty seven thousand dollars per trainer. And so far, we have four, so we still have uh another eight yet to hire. But there's twenty high schools and this bill is saying for every single high school, so therefore we would need to uh and I and her um Shirley Dix is the supervisor of athletic sheet. Her understanding was that that um the plan was to put that into the budget for twenty twenty six, but I do know that um through going through the budget process, not, and I know we still have many steps in that process, but from internally that just because you might have stuck it in your budget doesn't necessarily mean that it's there at this point, just because of because for of all, you know, us, the system struggling to to meet all the the needs that they have. Um, but that's still another um eight that would have to be budgeted for for the upcoming year. Um, and so the um uh the total cost for all of that for the entire school year um is that uh you're talking about, I mean, to get all twenty schools done would be one million, seven hundred forty six uh thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. Now, that does not include benefits. That's straight salary and and you can do a broad uh like uh estimation and say, when you think about benefits around thirty, thirty three percent of the cost of salary, that's usually your cost of benefits. So if you took that figure actually and multiplied it, multiplied it by thirty three percent, you pump it, add that on, which would be pretty significant. So and as so what they've been doing is um to make up the difference for the um for this is for the tr- trainers is using EMTs, but that's difficult at times because there's there's a shortage of EMTs. Fortunately, we have developed some relationships with the EMTs, and so they continue to try to work with the EMTs to make them to have them come. Um, but there is, um, we have, yeah, the sixteen of the schools definitely are using EMTs and they are um, they have nine games each, so it's a total one hundred forty four games in total. Um, and one game costs a hundred forty dollars because it's four hour game at thirty five dollars an hour. And that ends up being twenty thousand dollars, a hundred, twenty thousand, twenty thousand, a hundred sixty dollars, which is not anywhere near what the trainers are. But again, you're you're praying that you can get the EMTs. Um, so you know, for the meeting, for the again, when you don't have the um uh trainers. So the we don't have any issues with the idea of having trainers and having trainers and and or EMTs or whatever at meetings from the safety, when you think about safe for safety for students, except that this is an unfunded mandate. Um, and um we we don't even know if we can continue to fund it for the following year, but now we might have legislation that says you must do this. Um, and the system is attempting to do everything they can to have that support. The other thing that and one of the PZAM meetings that came up is that they did share the concern that this could, that down the road, this would be the first step, and then eventually down the road, they would be requiring um uh ha- having athletic trainers like uh like all the games. Um, because kids can get injured, you know, in soccer games and, you know, lots of different sports that they play. And so then that would definitely increase your costs down the road. So um, I know that um everyone is opposing it just because of of its uh 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 cost. We did write support with amendments only from the standpoint of you know, we we, you know, we're not against safety. We want safety for students. It's just that the cost um, that's a lot to mandate to for a school system.
Thank you, Robin. Um. Are there any comments or questions from committee members? I I've got some here, but I want to defer to my colleagues first. Uh, Board Member Walker?
Thank you so much for looking into this so many times. Um, Ms. Welch sincerely appreciate it. I think my question is just so I can ensure that I understand um where we are, and I don't disagree um about the cost, and I know we're all in for safety for our scholars on a football field for sure. My question is, is this correct? We have twenty high schools and um our budget allows for twelve right now, funding, funding for twelve of our high schools at current state. Of those twelve, we only have four that are hired, but between the gap between twelve and twenty, we have a gap of eight that's not funded at present time. Okay? So in my, right, we're, okay. So in my mind, it becomes unfunded, an unfunded mandate if the eight are not in the budget. But it's a funded mandate if the eight are in the budget. And the reason is because we're either, we have the money to either pay the eighty seven thousand dollars per person to be there for athletic trainer or the EMT, which significantly comes in under. So I just was hoping you could fix my story wherever the narrative is incorrect, just so I can get clear on whether it's funded or unfunded, because I'm just hearing a little bit of back and forth on if it is or if it isn't, and I think that that's at least my understanding of where the gap is.
So just in general, a legislation that has a mandate where there's not a um amount of money that comes with it, and it's a mandate that costs money, it automatically makes it an unfunded mandate regardless of whether or not you have it in your budget or not. Um, it's um, now, we don't generally in certain things that are, you know, that come across, the legislation that comes across that we are already doing, uh, we don't necessarily, you know, um if we're not gonna, I mean, we'll do just like this. We're not going to oppose it necessarily. We'll do like support with amendments or whatever, just because but it's still ultimately an unfunded mandate. Um, and so I you I you never want the legislation, I mean, if you're going to do it yourself, then you don't don't really want it to be mandated because you want, you know, we we're taking on that responsibility and willing to do it. So that's, you know, that's basically it.
Got it. So really, the pushback isn't about us having it in our budget, which is where my mind was going. It's not about having it in your budget, because I think what you're telling me, which we didn't get to the answer if we're really funded for the eight, but I think what you're telling me is regardless of if we're funded for all of them, if it's legislated is where the definition is for if it's unfunded.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, I wait. Okay, thanks.
Um, I I there there are two thoughts that I have here about this bill. One, I I really like the concept, but there seems to be two unique challenges here that we've not solved for. PG CPS has been the front, has been on the um on the front line with this. Um, we were thoughtful about this early on, but we've not been able to hire people for this. Um, I I grew up, and most folks know this, I grew up in Mississippi where I was the assistant principal at a high school. We actually had an athletic, a program that would actually train students to actually serve in these roles, and they would actually get the certification. They would lead the current Technical Education Center. So I do think that there's an opportunity to work with this delegate around if we've got twelve spots already budgeted for this work, I think we can have a win if we find a pipeline of people to fill these roles that we already have for athletic trainers. So I think that is such an opportunity. I also wonder if there's an opportunity, I know we have not gotten there yet, around suggesting amendments to people. Um, this might be a bit easier to swallow too, if the language said when funds are available, right, rather than saying you've got to do this all the time, because this district is doing it based on 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 funds available. So I do appreciate the posture of the administration to say, you know, with amendments, but um, m- Ms. Welch, I I may be missing the mark. I know we have an amazing um CTE program over at Crossland. Do we have a program at at Crossland that trains athlete students to go into athletic training to be able to get certified?
I would have to check that out for you.
Okay, all right. But I I think there's some opportunities to build this up. I think this is right. I think we need safety and all of this at games and whatnot. But it sounds like the biggest hurdle is actually getting staffing for, you know, an athletic trainer um at this spot, but I think we should look into it. This is another one of those measures where I think we have a conversation with the delegate around where while we have the posture that we have. But it sounds like there's an opportunity for us to work on some pipeline work as well to achieve the delegates' goals. Um, I just wanted to lay that out. Do my other colleagues have any a- any final thoughts around this? And then I want to go to the other two bills so we can finish the rest of our work tonight. Okay, seeing then, uh, Robin, if you could talk a bit about um, I I I want to front load this one a little bit as you talk about them. HB three, five, nine and uh HB three, seven, nine. I want to front load this and say, we gave intense feedback to the delegate. And the delegate might have listened to us. I don't know how often this happens. Uh, but the delegate might have listened to us and made some amendments to the bill. Um, and we can start with whatever, wherever you want to go, Robin. Um, three seventy nine or three fifty nine.
So these were the uh two uh local bills, correct?
Yes, these were the two local bill, the uh delegate to various's bills.
So at this point, uh uh, if I can use up here, um. Seventy nine was uh.
Uh, fentanyl consumption.
Yes.
And teen pregnancy support was three fifty nine.
Right, so we we um that we are, uh, I mean, I, we haven't really changed our position in any way because with of the um uh. I mean, hold on a minute, I'm just trying to.
You're good. I'll I'll voice over this while you find what you need. I brought this back to the committee because on three seventy nine around the preventative measures for fentanyl consumption, the delegate actually changed the bill that would want, used to require us to actually pass them out and procure them. Now it only has a reporting requirement that we just report on the number of test strips we actually passed out this year. So that's three seventy nine. So she completely changed the bill with an amendment. Um, I somehow, they sent me the amendment. And then on the teen pregnancy support bill, they changed it from the center's language and also took our recommendation. We said it was unfunded, but um they had a funding stream that they had found. But we weren't getting any of that to administer the program, and so they put in the fifteen percent administrative cost, which was a recommendation from uh from us around the funding. So I wanted to bring those back to the committee to give us an opportunity to um decide if we wanted to change our position or not. Uh, Robin, did you want to say anything else there before I entertain committee members?
So I just, I'm looking at the bill, the drug detection uh bill, and um I don't see any amendments on it.
All right, well, I'm going to forward them to you. Sounds like they didn't make it to you. Um.
I mean, they're not, they're not on the MGA site, so where they uh post the bills.
Okay, well, give me one second. I'm forwarding to you, but I believe Board Member Boozer Strather has her hand up while I forward these to you, okay?
Yeah, starting with um PG five oh seven, two, five, which is the HB three, seven nine, the testing s- strip products. Um. So there is a fund that we can access to be able to provide these so that part of it, so that part of it has always been in there. Um, I thought we ended our last discussion in support uh with amendments or with with questions or further discussion, um, because this fit in with our our uh overdose prevention strategies. So I hope we can do a letter that is clear about that support before the education committee meeting Thursday morning. The um other one on supports for parenting students, the big piece of it was was that we would have daycare centers and, I mean, we're not even getting capital funding barely to build a building this year. We cannot build twenty eight daycare centers until the legislature decides they're going to fund us for that. So that was taken out. That reality was take that the they are taken out. And that was a big change that the delegate made in our discussions. I hope we can take a closer look. I hope we can switch to support with amendments and get a new letter written and Chair Moss, I would look to you about how much we have to get through that here in this meeting, or if we can take that work outside of the meeting now that that big piece has been taken out. And I and I referenced bills that improve po- positive data. The support of of parenting students would absolutely help to improve graduation rates as well as academic achievement rates, and it would put us closer to back to the supports that the school system was well known for in the nineties to, you know, into the two thousands where there is um you know, definitely um success. You know, the students graduated, they're raising their families here and their their children are in our school system now. So I think uh we owe this population getting back to the resources needed and and these support the academic gains that we are held accountable to.
Yeah, I appreciate you. Um, I, so I'm not going to expect the administration to respond to this immediately. I think the board can issue uh a support position if the committee so wishes, um, and we can get that letter drafted. I know Robin has not had a chance to review these amendments on the behalf of the administration. Um, but I I I do support the notion of being able to provide support letters from these. One, we struggle to get delegates to respond to us and take our feedback to change things, and this delegate did it, and I don't see any um in any adversary in nature. So if Board Member Walker, Board Member Briggs, and you, Board Member Brother Strather, are on board with the board actually sending a letter of support, I am fine with that, but um the administration would need time before they send a letter to change their position. Am I right in that assumption, Ms. Welch?
Yes, because because again, I both bills, even the the other one is uh three fifty nine, nothing on the MGA site shows are the amendments are in place at this point.
I got you. I forwarded you the ones that I have. We'll check that again in the morning too. But I do want to give you all the time as the administration to do that. Board Member Walker?
Yes, I am in support of, based on the revisions to draft a support letter. I do think before we send anything formally that we do need it up on the site. And um that's going to be imperative for us to be able to match that uh, the site information with the bill to our position for the bill, especially given that it will be different than what the administration is saying. So let's just make sure we have our Ts crossed as well on that piece for the language that was taken out. Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, Board Member Briggs, I I know you didn't raise your hand, but I do need to hear your voice on this uh if before I proceed, sorry.
I consent to what was shared. I I'm in agreement with the changes.
Okay.
With the additional caveat that it's actually public information.
Okay, and I and 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 Ms. Welch, we can co- we can connect in the morning as well. I don't want to put the administration on, you know, because you all haven't had a chance to review it and talk to all of your team members. So uh, we can just huddle back on that perspective.
And I I do know that until we actually see it on the site where the bill is changed, I I just know what we wouldn't move forward um in making any changes until we knew for a fact it, you know, it was in place. I am looking, they do have the fiscal note up um now, so with with this is uh what? Three seventy nine, I think.
I think we'll follow the administration.
Fifty nine. But um, but no, as soon as as soon as we get the information, you know, that we actually see it on the site and everything, we can discuss it. And um, and you know, definitely we'll let you know, you know, what where the administration stands on this. So.
And and my apologies, I thought you had those amendments. I I would have sent them to you sooner uh than now, so my apologies. Okay.
The the concern is, is that if they haven't, for like the three fifty nine, if they haven't made changes as it relates to CTE program, it's just not a easy thing where you can just say, oh, we're going to put a CTE program here and a CTE program here. We don't, we're not in charge of that. It's actually MSD. You have to go through an entire approval process. And the other issue is And the other issue is based, uh, based on how the bill is written, it would, uh, it's make, it's like, well, we're gonna move here. We're gonna move this program over here because now we have kids here, or we're gonna move this program here because and we don't have that capability to be moving programs all over the place because space is a major issue, especially since we're talking little preschoolers in high school. So um, that, that, that is another concern. So I'll be curious to see the, the finalized bill with the amendments to see. Because I, I, I think just from an operational standpoint, I, you know, it's a great idea. It's just that I don't know that it's even possible, es- especially if we can't get MSD approval on the CTE programs.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I think if you look at the amendment, some of that language was struck. Um, but I got two, two colleagues who um, have their hand up. Board Member Walker and then Board Member Boozer Strather?
Yes, this will be just really quickly. Thank you. I just wanted to reconfirm that the, the strips bill is, one, um, it still remains no fiscal note for PPS. And then the second piece I wanted just to reconfirm is that um, the training that's happening inside that the um, the grantor is providing the training that's needed for our um.
Great questions, and I lost her. Uh, Board Member Boozer Strather, I think you might have that context too, so I'll recognize you.
Well, I wa- I was just going to speak to the other bill around the um, support with amendments that we would be carefully looking at those operational aspects that just, if, if there are others that have not been changed besides the um, the actual daycare um, around CTE. That's exactly what I mean by support with amendments, that we will be very clear about the, the issues of imple- implementation. And um, you know, as we go into this. Uh, I just wanted to assure, assure my colleagues that that is absolutely on my mind too. But I, I do have to see the final amendments as well.
Yep. Alright, well, I think we have a plan to deal with this, this bill. Um, Robin, before we go to um, policy first consideration, is there another bill that you and Shelby need us to talk through? Um, I think we've got time for maybe one more, and then we can move to policies for first consideration. I know we built this nice list, so I want to make sure we satisfy what you need.
So I will say, there is a bill that's coming up for an hearing uh, this uh, week, uh, next week, excuse me. And it has to do with Medicaid funding. And it, and I think this is a critical bill that there should be um, testimony submitted. It has to do, it's uh, the, what they're doing is making a change, and it's on this uh, list that I sent. Um, if I can find it, it, and it, we're at risk of losing, um, oh, here we go. It's Maryland Medical Assistance Program Use of Reimbursement Funds by Schools. Uh, it's Senate Bill five oh six, House Bill six eighty-nine. And what it does, it's um, it talks about that you can only use your funds for Medicaid for certain specific things. They're putting a lot of limitations in it. Um, and, and I'll, as, what, in terms of what Special Ed shared with us, they said, as a result of the legislation, the district anticipates a loss of eleven point seven six million dollars, um, which directly supports child's uh, critical services for students with disabilities. This loss uh, will create a significant deficits in the district's annual operating budget, impacting essential programs and resources that serve our most vulnerable students. Additionally, the restrictive nature of the bill will require the district to reallocate funds, further string our ability to maintain uh, current levels of support. Of course, we oppose it.
Um, thank you. Board Member, Board Member Briggs, your hand went up real quick. I got you.
Well, yeah, Mrs. Welsh, I was just gonna say, if you could, if you could just repeat that one more time, because I caught the la- the, the end of it, the tail end of it. Please.
What I read, you mean?
Yeah, what you read.
Oh, okay. Okay, we have a pose. It says, and this comes directly from Special Ed, our Special Ed uh, um, department. As a result of the legislation, the district anticipates a revenue loss of eleven point seven six million, which directly supports critical services for students with disabilities. Um, the um, the law, this loss will create significant deficit in dis- the district's annual operating budget, impacting essential programs and resources that serve our most vulnerable students. Additionally, the restrictive nature of the bill will require the district to reallocate funds, further straining our ability to maintain current levels of support.
Okay, so yeah, I was, what I was trying to clarify was like, what, wh- what was being changed um, with Medicare that, or Medicaid that was causing um, those consequences.
So just, this is a, I, I can pull the bill up, but this is the quick synopsis here. It says requiring, the bill requires elementary schools, secondary schools, and county school systems to use certain funds received for services provided under Maryland's Medicaid Assistance Program, or the Maryland Children's Health Insurance Program to provide additional positions for providers, paid internships for students so you can become providers, stipends designed to address problems in provider recruitment and retention, and stipends for providing working, working, providers working in low per- uh, performing schools designed to encourage uh, provider recruitment and retention. So in essence, they're telling them what they're gonna use the money for. And in the past, um, the Medicaid funds, when they came in, you were restricted by what you could bill for. You know, like OT, PT, speech, uh, psych services, those kinds of things you could bill for. But once you received the money, then you, as a school system, determined it had to be used for special education. But it was the school system's determination of where to best use that, those funds, you know, to provide the services for students.
I see, okay. Thank you.
Rob, I don't see the uh, Board Member uh, Briggs, you, you got more before I ask something real quick?
No.
Uh, who's the bill sponsor?
Uh, let me, I have to pull it up for you. Then get, uh, there we go.
Um, colleagues, um, this, a- a- as she sorts through this, I'm just curious if we want to, the administration's already opposed it. We'll also need to decide if we want to offer testimony around this, given the impact on the district next week. Um, I do think we need to make that decision uh, while we're here.
The House bill is uh, uh, sponsored by Delegate Addleberry. And it's crossfired with five oh six. And the Senate bill is Senator Henson.
Okay, okay, got you. Um, any other thoughts from colleagues on this one? I know the admini- uh, go ahead, Board Member Boozer Strather.
I, I agree with administration on this one. So if the board wanted to take a position, I think administration has analyzed this in a, in a way that meet, meets my understanding of how we operate.
Um, Board Member Walker?
Yeah, based on what I heard tonight, I'm tend to be aligned as well. I just was wondering if any colleagues have spoken to um, Delegate Addleberry or um, Senator Henson on this one here by chance? I know I haven't on this one. What's the, what's the um HB number, please, Robin?
It's uh, House Bill six eighty-nine.
Six eighty-nine, okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll jump back with uh, John Till and um.
Yeah, thank you.
About how to proceed.
And if she uh, needs any information, just tell her to contact me, you know, I can help her.
Okay. Um, Robin, you're good on these before I move to four point O?
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Alright, thank you so much for your hard work uh, on that table. If you'll send the full table to the board too, that'll be great. But again, thank you. I know it's lots of work to try to keep up with all this. So huge thanks to you and Shelby for keeping us abreast. We're gonna move to uh, four point O, um, which is policies for first consideration. These are discussion items. There are two items for discussion tonight. Each member will have two rounds per item during the discussion. Each round will be two point five minutes. We're gonna start with four point one, Policy three four one five, School-Based Management Teams. The chair recognizes Ms. Welsh for an overview of Policy thirty-four fifteen, School-Based Management Teams.
Cindy, can you uh, post that policy? Okay, so School-Based Management Teams, this is a policy we already have. Um, um, it did not have much in it, but um, except to say there will be a School-Based Management Team. And what's, what, who will be involved in the management team? So I have gone through to make uh, changes um, uh, in, in the language. So the first thing is, as far as your policy statement, um, and this really goes um, to um, uh, parent involvement, community involvement, engagement, um, as your staff engagement. And because what you're doing is, you're committed to school-based decision-making, but it's, which is integral to the school improvement process. But also that you want a school-based management team that's representative of the demographics of the student population. And then that family, you know, the board believes that family and community engagement is a shared responsibility and a, an essential component for improving the academic outcomes of our students. And we do have that, we, we not only just say that in this particular policy, but we also have it in our Board Policy zero one zero five, which is a parent, family, and community involvement. Um, and so the purpose of the policy is to provide guidelines for the composition and function of the school-based management team, ensuring that it represents all components of staff, parents, and the community. So I do have definitions um, as it references um, a, a couple of the unions. Um, so the um, the composition for standards, as far as who needs to be on the school-based management team, of course, a school administrator, and then a representative of the faculty advisory council, that if you look at the definition, it's actually um, a con- contractually mandated school-based committee, which serves to voice concerns for the Prince George's County Education Association members of, of the principal, of the principal of the school. So members of that particular council would then become members of the school-based management team. And as well as then representatives from each of the following employee organizations, which is Local twenty-two fifty and Local four hundred, which I did put uh, definitions in mainly just so that um, um, you, that you can see who who of our staff belong to which union, so you know who would be involved in these meetings. And then it would be the president of the PTA, PTSA, PTO, and other parent advisory groups shall point one representative. So any groups that you have within the school. And now I added this uh, this piece, and certainly you can take it out or add to it, it's up to you. But I did, because we had such a conversation about um, previously about the interviewing, um, the community-based interviewing for principal, I felt, and this is just about school performance, how the school's doing and what's happening in the school. I did add a parent of a student receiving special education or section five oh four. And I don't know if you want to add anything else as specific to like the fact that, you know, our English language learners, um, you know, that, that population, that, I mean, it's something to consider. But I did, I thought uh, when you're talking about school uh, performance and achievement and everything, I definitely feel like it would be important to have at least a parent of a student that is receiving special ed services on that committee also. Um, and then for the high schools, uh, student representative from the Student Government Association would also be included in the uh, committee. So then uh, the committee serves as an advisory committee to the principal for each school. And it works collaboratively, you know, all these different groups within the committee work to get, to provide recommendations and support to enhance student achievement. And you can scroll down, Cindy. Um, and um, and uh, so provides a recommendation and support to enhance student achievement and overall school performance. With it, uh, focused on the evidence-based student achievement. And then um, I did put in though, and this was also, and I, I want to say it's in the administrative procedure that goes with it, is that the decision ma- making, however, shall rest with the principal of the school. So it, the committee provides the advice and recommendations, and then the deci- the, the principal ultimately has to make a decision. And the evident, evidence-based student achievement is, is really related to, let's look at the data and see what the data is telling us about each of, all of our students and each student group. So then it says that the SBMT shall assist the principal in reviewing data on student performance and attendance, teacher feedback, community input on a regular basi- basis to measure overall school performance success. So it's broader than just student achievement, because there's a lot of factors that go into a successful experience for a student. So that's why I, as I said, overall school performance success. And these meetings shall be open to the public, and meeting dates and times shall be publicized to the school community. And minutes shall be made readily, readily accessible to us, all stakeholders and staff. Um, um, just because, and again, this sort of is in line with your Policy zero one zero five as far as, you know, um, uh, parental community engagement, because in that particular policy, it talks about the fact we want parents to be involved in the decision-making and, you know, be informed about everything that's going on. And then the last piece of the, the uh, policy that I added was uh, that the superintendent or designated shall provide professional development um, regarding functions and processes of the SMBT to its members annually. So I, I think it's important that the committee itself, the team itself knows, you know, they really know, understands what their role is and, you know, and how they're gonna operate, if they're gonna be suc- if they're gonna have success, uh, you know, as a committee in advising the principal. Um, and then it just, as you scroll down under uh, implementation responsibilities, it says that the superintendent is authorized to develop administrative procedure, a procedure to implement this policy. And then we have the parent, family, community involvement policy as another policy, as well as we do have an administrative procedure to this policy. Uh, so uh, that's basically it in a nutshell.
Thank you so much, Ms. Welsh. Um, the question is, shall the committee um, recommend Policy thirty-four fifteen, School-Based Management Team to the policy sponsor for revision approval? Is there any discussion? Uh, Board Member Briggs?
Yeah, thank you so much, Chair uh, Moss. Um, I, you know, Mrs. Welsh, I tried to like, I, I looked up actually on Board Docs this policy before, and I didn't get, I didn't see the version that you had here. So I referenced the old version that is there. I think it was like last dated, updated in like two thousand and five or so. Uh-huh. And that one, uh, it just, so I had a few questions for you, because I was trying to understand, um, I had some ideas about this policy. So like, the school-based management team, I noticed that you didn't reference any state law, so it's not tied to like any, i- is it an actual technical term? Or is that just like a PG CBS term? Because I looked it up and I didn't find anything when I did a search on that specific term.
And I would have to say that I did the same thing when I started to do this, and I was like, where is the information on this? So I ended up, because it's not, I, so first I thought, oh, maybe this is related to Title One. And then I finally got ahold of one of the associate superintendents uh, in the area office and said, is this something that's specific to like uh, Title One, and when you might be in a school improvement type of status? Or is this something that all schools are uh, do? And it's actually, and, and I do, I have to say, there was a fiscal that it was done last year. And I remembered this, that there was a reference to these school-based management teams, because I couldn't get anywhere. I could not find anything that verified there's still an existence. And so anyway, I went back to that note, and then sure enough, it said school-based management team. So it turns out that uh, that um, it's recommended that schools have school-based management teams. And a lot of the schools do have them, many of them do, uh, because it's just good practice in, in terms of it, it's not related to you're in trouble or anything. It's related to you, you want a really well-functioning school that provides successful experiences to kids. So I, I, I could not find any connection to law either.
Okay, alright, because that was, it was pretty vague, and it was, and as you said, like, it was probably like a few sentences. And just said, this is what a school-based management team. So it's great that you fill a lot of that out. For me, I was thinking about, you know, I, I, one of the things that I loved about certain um, areas, for example, Chicago has something called Local School Advisory Councils, where um, it's kind of like a s- a smaller version of what the board does. So they actually select the pers- the principal for the school, they help to manage the budget, the school's budget. Um, they do a lot of stuff that really kind of does with, goes with governance, and it gets community members and other stakeholders involved. And I was thinking, when I was thinking about these teams, and since it was so vague, and hopefully Chair Moss, you'll let me go over um, this, okay. Uh, is that, you know, I was like thinking, what if we had something like that with this policy? Like, you know, even as we're finishing the principal selection process, right? Where we were talking about the HR team, and we're like, can we get enough families that really represent the demographics? Like, that would kind of solve for this problem, right? Because if the school-based management team was supposed to be involved in that process in some way, they're supposed to reference them. That's one touch point with this broader community that could reflect, it would be an additional, uh, an additional cover for um, the, you know, the, the areas we can address with this principal selection. I think the other piece is like with um, some of the, you know, capital improvement program, and where our schools go, and input from the community. We constantly hear about how schools and community members want to have more involvement there. And I feel like these school-based management teams could be an oppor- in, an opportunity for the community to have more say-so, and for them to be an actual group that is required to be engaged. So when we know for sure, when SIP is happening, when they're doing mapping of, you know, building facilities, and then like where goes, what goes where, you know, this could almost be like another formal body that they have to kind of come before and have discussions with, but it is hyper-local. It's really, you know, it's the school that's most impacted. And I was thinking like, this could really be an, an intersecting policy for the principal selection, for the SIP. Um, and then maybe even for like the budget, right? Like, the principal has to manage the bu- the budget, but who has that, you know, additional support? Not oversight, but additional support of how that money is, you know, utilized. And I know PTAs would love that. I know they have some of that, those insights, but I just want. But I just wanted to say that I think um, since the policy was so vague initially, was posted on um, the website right now. Um, I'm just curious what your thoughts are there.
Well, I, I would say it's your policy. And so if you felt like you would like to expand uh, the role of this management team, I think that's certainly something, you know, uh, to consider. You know, I always take stuff back then to double-check against, you know, if there's any, and it's really more functionality, if they would run into a roadblock and, and, you know, and just the operation piece. But certainly uh, in, in any way you want to expand it, I think you can do that.
Board Member Boozer Strutter?
Um, thank you um, very much in support of this policy. And as a board, doing whatever we can through this revision to reinvigorate this. The um, now that we have the school performance plans and the school-based budgets as required documents on every, as data documents on every single school website, the date, this is now way more accessible and public in that the school-based management teams could, um, you know, to, to um, Board Member Briggs's point, there's like more direction now. I think the difficulty of these in the past was they haven't been defined. And now you actually have the two documents available to your entire school community. And of course, this management team, that could be the representatives reviewing and moving along and reporting back through PTA meetings or other, the parent coffees, I know every school brings their parents in differently. I want to say that we also have an issue that the standing up of this, that we do not have active faculty advisory councils in every school. We do not have a lead in every school. And I think we could be partners to PGCEA in those gaps so that every PGCEA member in a school building knows who their um, FAC leader is and what they do on their behalf. For years, I've spoken to individuals who do not feel tapped into that knowledge. Doesn't mean it's not happening in a school. I'm saying that it's, it's not happening, it's not happening at a level that every single PGCEA member feels engaged and knowledgeable. So I think standing up that we support strong FACs is super important in this moment. And of course, the representation from the other um, members who um, are part of the teams in schools, particularly around operations. So, yeah, I think, I think it's great that we're looking at this again. And I did, I did just want to say, we al- also in hundred and twenty-nine and growing of our schools with the budget, presuming we don't lose our funding, is the community school steering committees. And those steering committees have the same, much of this overlapping represent- representation, but their, their focus is different. So we would have two, two strong um, shared leadership commi- committees in our building.
Thank you so much, Board Member Boozer Strutter. I support this policy as well. Um, Board Member Briggs, I actually wanted a name change on this, I just couldn't figure out the language. Um, but I also didn't want to confuse folks who they've already been around. I actually do have a concern around um, how do we get the language where a principal doesn't feel like they have to do all of these advisory committees? When I was a school principal, like you got one for title one, you got one for this, you got one for this. So um, Robin, you and your brilliance with language, like, how do we have some language where we hold a line on this, but we also not expecting a principal to implement five different committees? So like, maybe somewhere possible or when possible language? Or somehow, consult, maybe we need to bring in the budget policy and say the budget, you know, it runs through this body. I would like to clean that up a bit. I also wanted some language around how often they should meet. I know the administrative procedure might get to that, but I actually think the board policy could guide this and say, this team should meet at least four times a year, whatever we feel is right, or, you know, two times a year. But I did have, and more if, if, if needed, right, if necessary. But those are some of my concerns. I wanted a, uh, a nicer title of the group, which I can, can move away from that. Two, I wanted a policy to codify the frequency um, of meeting. And three, I wanted this to somehow speak to all the other entities that need to meet within a school, um, so that a principal wouldn't feel overwhelmed by this, but would see it as support, um, and not in addition to other things. I, I don't know how to get us there with my three thoughts, but that's where I wanted to take this. And I believe Board Member Boozer Strutter's hand came up, but Robin, do you want to respond to what I just said?
So um, as far as the name, I'd be hesitant to change the name only because that's what they recognize, I, I think. But I can certainly check into that. Um, but secondly, as far, so when you were talking about the faculty advisory council and that not everyone, every school has them, but that they're, they're out there and they're meeting with the council. Then you talked about the community schools and they have their advisory. I'm thinking to myself, I thought, right away I thought, oh my God, that poor principal, they're going to be in these advisory committee meetings all the time. And it's sort of like, couldn't you sort of put this together somehow? So I was sort of thinking the same thing. I, what I probably need to do is see if I can't get um, some principals, maybe associate, maybe the associate superintendent, some people that are there doing it, to get their input, also community schools, and get some thoughts from them about, uh, you know, how do they think that might be the best way to um, that we could do that so that, you know? Because if you think about like when the community school advisory committees meet, they're, they're, they're looking at school performance, but they're also looking at, you know, the needs of the school and what wraparound services, you know, are needed, you know, the results of their needs assessments, things like that. But they're all, that all plays a role in success for the school. So um, you know, I, I think it's a good idea. I, I just will need some time to, you know, get the players together so that I can get all the information from them.
Did you have any thoughts around the frequency, if that needed to be?
Oh, so I actually, originally I was going to put in quarterly, but then I thought, well, maybe you're pushing it because since the, just what Jonathan said, the first, the, the actual policy is just so, like there's nothing there that I thought, well, I, I really don't know what people's thoughts were about this. But I, I thought possibly quarterly might be appropriate. Um, and, you know, it just makes sense to, you know, kids get graded every quarter. So it's sort of the idea that, you know, it quarterly, I don't know, but it could be anything. But I do think it could put the time in.
My colleagues have raised their hands and uh, they might feel differently. So Board Member Boozer Strutter and then Board Member Briggs.
Yeah, thank you. So on frequency, I was thinking alignment with that the principals have their required meetings with their instructional directors. And I think they call them data dives, but they might have another term for them. But those are quite intense for the principals, they do a lot of preparation with the data. I don't know, I just don't remember if those are twice a year or, or more frequent. I would think that a principal would want to align the data dive that they, either before or after, to, that they take to their instructional director. Or come back with, because I know that those data dives point to some of the resources that principals may want from their broader school community, whether that comes out of the new, you know, their steering, their community school steering committee or otherwise, or their PTAs' parent support around mathematics, right? So those are the um, that would be one alignment point, that they would all go together. Um, I would love to know which schools feel like they're doing this really well to be able to share out, especially FACs. I would love to know where there are strong FACs and how that, you know, can be supported. So those are two thoughts that come to mind around some of those other issues. The other I would like to put out there, that I've always wanted for the community school steering committee, and I know this is not that policy, but I've always wanted the names of the, the na- that, so you know, you have the titles of who's supposed to serve on this. I've always wanted that to be part of the school-based website, so that everyone knows that there's a community school steering committee, who's on it. I would, I could see this also being something you'd want on your website to get to, you know, some of those very things I said around, like maybe, you know, there are individual PGCEA members who don't know much about a well-functioning FAC or their current leader. So we could solve a lot with, with some of these ideas.
Okay.
Um, Board Member Briggs?
Yeah, thank you so much. So uh, Mrs. Welsh, I wanted to just double-click on the request. I, I, I initially posed it as a question, but I would love to actually have those under consideration, the additions that I talked about. Budget, principal selection, and um, the SIP process. And then I like what I'm hearing from my colleagues around, um, I feel like whatever we're making a policy, best practices involve the people who are impacted by the policy. And I would love to hear from principals around what they think is the best approach because they're going to give us the, and, and then we don't have to reinvent the wheel or like expend so much energy and effort trying to guess, because that just takes a lot of, you know, human capital and, and, and time. Um, I want to, I wanted to say that um, in addition to that, I love the idea of getting like where these are working well. Um, but if there's some way, I don't know if this is like something, I know we've done a survey before and um, maybe like, uh, I know that we, you, Cindy and I did this last year where we put something out, but I would love to hear like, does the community want some of the things that I talked about? So like for the budget piece or for the SIP piece, um, for the principal selection? Like, would that be something they'd even be interested in? Because I don't want to add it into a policy if there's no desire for it. So um, if there's some way to do some of those things, I feel like this could be a really robust policy that addresses so many issues. And this is the last thing that I'll say, is that I feel like, um, I was talking to a principal in my district and she talked about how the school revision process, like her layout, floor layout for her, her school. She's like, I just really wish that I could have had some input into it because she's like, you know, we have too few classrooms, but we have like all of these kind of open concept spaces where students can come together. She's like, but if I had more input into like, how many more classrooms are the floor plans? I would have said, add me, add two more classrooms and get rid of like that open space because it's just really not helpful to our building, right? It's not what we need. And I know that when we talk to the SIP team, there isn't really a formal process and where, how they engage. I mean, they do engage principals, but this is an opportunity. If they were tasked with going to the schools to parents, community members, I think this could be a way to like, get the voices. And this just helps us as a school district so that we know there's, it's not always going to the school board. There are so many experts in our community. There are people who know my schools way better than I'll ever know them. And I, I don't think I, you know, that we always have the, the right um, pulse of what's happening in the community. So I think this might be an opportunity to kind of address some of those things.
All right, thank you, Board Members. I don't see any more hands. Um, this vote was to move um, policy thirty-four fifteen, school-based management teams to the policy sponsor for revision approval. Um, this was a first consideration. So Ms. Adelaide, uh, could you please call the roll? Uh, yes. All right, there are four in the affirmative. Policy thirty-four fifteen, school-based management teams will be recommended to the policy sponsor for revision approval. Um, policies for second consideration, uh, this means for public comment, there are three items for consideration. Policy thirty-one hundred, investments, policy thirty-one sixty, transfer funds, policy fifty-two oh six, yearbook, um, photographs, um, which is, we're rescinding that one. The question is, shall the committee recommend the policies under agenda items five point one through five point three to the full board for public comment consideration? Any discussion? No discussion, Ms. Adelaide, will you please take the roll? Uh, yes. There are four in the affirmative. The policies under agenda items five point one through five point three will be recommended to the full board for public comment consideration. We'll take your item six point O now. These are policies for third consideration, first reader to the board, six point one, developing curriculum documents for instructional programs in elementary and secondary schools, possession of and use of alcohol and drugs on school grounds, informational material announcements, purchasing, automated external defibrillators, evaluating the superintendent of schools, bus transportation for cheerleaders, majorates, et cetera, proms, number of members in terms of office, adoption of policies, adoption and amendments of administrative regulations. The policy under agenda items six point one through six point eleven was submitted for public comment. Only one public comment was received. This comment was about policy thirty-three twenty-three, purchasing. The chair recognizes Ms. Welsh to share the comment received and the response from the administration.
So um, the, I, and I hate to say this, I have so many pieces of paper and all the bills that I'm trying, oh, there, thank you Cindy. So the comments uh, was that the, the person who sent the comment asked the question um, about the request of modifying the purchasing requirements for amounts between five thousand and fifteen thousand. And um, wait, I'm sorry, you're, the, the comment, you, I see what you did. You put, you actually put the response from administration, that was very good, okay. So that the comment was about uh, the lack of the requirement of this policy to require more than one quote for purchase below fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine. Um, although purchaser, purchases under fourteen thousand nine hundred nine may seem small on grand scheme, when several purchases under the threshold are added together, it can be a significant amount of money being proved. Um, and at the, and then she goes on to, or he goes on to talk a little bit more about the specifics as far as the um, documentation and justification for selecting a particular vendor. So the response from administration was that um, they are considering the request to modify the purchasing requirement and they appreciate the comment and they are considering the recommendation will require two written or oral quotes instead. Um, and they do believe that that will likely uh, increase competition and provide greater opportunities for MBE certified firms and be more cost-effective. Um, so they are going to move forward, and I think if, there's one other thing she added that talked about uh, putting the um, putting it into their policy manual also. So um, I wanted to point out um, uh, that um, the policy itself is supposed to move forward then to, to, back to the board. But we recently received the Office of Legislative Audits, um, uh, excuse me a minute. Hold on one second. Anyway, um, my, we did, um, the OLA results came in, they're very preliminary at this point and we actually did provide responses, but there are a couple of um, findings that would require uh, some changes to the policy, minor, but still we need to incorporate them into the policy before it moves forward. At this point, uh, everything, the, the Office of Legislative Audits is at a confidential state because until they get our responses back and have an opportunity to, you know, put that all together and then they come out with their final report, that's then when it will be communicated to everyone. And my, my question would be, I, I guess my recommendation would be that since we're, we're getting close to the end, but we probably are going to have to make at least two changes to that policy um, based on the findings, that we hold off on moving that policy forward until we get the final um, uh, report from OLA, uh, which supposedly they told us would come like around the end of May, uh, beginning of June. And that way we can incorporate it uh, versus bringing, finalizing the policy, then turning around and revising the policy again and putting it on the list for next year to make revisions to the policy, uh, you know, another time. Um, certainly it's your call, but um, that would be my recommendation.
Would any board members like to pull any of the items for discussion? Uh, I'm going to pull six point four so we can handle it in the way that she advised. Oh, Board Member, I don't know which one of you had your hand up, Boozer Strutters or Board Member Briggs?
Boozer Strutter was first.
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, I agree with pulling it and to hear that the OLA will, that'll be a full two years since they started is um, was a little bit of a disappointment for me to hear how long this process is continuing for us to be able to get to work. And as, as a co-chair of the audit committee, I, I definitely support that this will be our very transparent um, action that we have seen, that we will see these results in May or June. And we are already responding because we already have pulled this to be able to fully update it based on that feedback. So that's what I would, um, I'm, I'm good with that.
Board Member Briggs?
Yeah, and I wanted to pull item six point one, new policy, developing curriculum documents for instructional programs in elementary and secondary schools.
All right, Board Members, um, the question will be, shall the committee recommend the policies under agenda items six point one through six point eleven, except six point one and six point four as both of these policies were pulled? Is there any discussion on the policies that remained? If not, Ms. Adelaide, will you take the roll?
Dr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Strutter?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Um, the policies under agenda items six through one through six through eleven will be recommended to the full board for public comment, except six point one and six point four, uh, will be recommended to the full board for public comment consideration. I think at this time, we should deal with item six point one. I believe Board Member Briggs had this item pulled. Board Member Briggs, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, to Mrs. Welsh that I wanted to add a section E. I think it's under standards. Um, it talks about coordination between the central office leadership and school-based staff. But I really wanted to just call out, I think, coordination between the central office and principals. Um, one of the reasons, rationale behind that is that, you know, obviously, uh, principals have a percentage of impact on the school's outcomes. And, um, there were some things that I was looking up around, like effective implementation of, um, interventions with principals that really do drive change in meaningful ways. And so just kind of as a, um, you know, the, the, the call to action in the policy, I want to ensure that we're lifting up, um, the connection with principals as well, not just like all school-based staff, but separately. And there were some pieces of language that I wanted to include. I'm happy to send it to you after, but it was just around like, consistent and differentiated assistance to principals, modeling ways of thinking and acting, developing and using tools, brokering external resources, and engaging principals as resources for each other. Um, and so I want to just like make sure that there's this collaboration between the central office. As I talked to some of the principals in my district and just the schools, like, I think that the more support that they have, particularly right now, um, is going to be imperative, especially, you know, as we're thinking about all the resources that our teachers, um, will need. They are the leaders of the school and so them being strong, to some extent, allows our entire school to be strong. So, um, I'm happy to send that language to you, but I just wanted to say that, yeah.
Board Member Briggs, I believe you're wanting to postpone this policy until the next meeting to give the administration time to make those revisions? Is that what you wanted to do? The question is, shall the committee postpone policy six point one that deals with curriculum to the next policy and governance committee meeting? Is there any discussion? There's no discussion, Ms. Adelaide. Will you please take the roll call vote to postpone six point one to the next policy and governance committee meeting? Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Strutter?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, policy six point one to deal with curriculum will be postponed to the next policy and governance committee meeting. We've got one more vote, colleagues, and we'll be out of here. The question is, shall the committee postpone policy six point four, um, that deals with, uh, purchasing? Um, until we can get the legislative audit report, um, I won't, it's not our next meeting, but until we get the next, the legislative audit report. Um, Ms., is there any discussion? There's no discussion, Ms. Adelaide. Will you please call the roll call, the roll?
Dr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Boozer, Dr. Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Strutter?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
There are four in the affirmative. Policy six point four will be postponed until the legislative audit report comes back. Um, at this time, we are at, um, we will adjourn our meeting. The chair informs the public that the next virtual policy and governance committee meeting will be on, this date is incorrect in my script, so I want to get the correct one. It will be
March eleventh.
March eleventh. Uh, please continue to check the Prince George's County Board of Education website for meeting information and updates. Thank you all for great discussion and attendance. To our viewers, thank you for watching. That being no, there being no further business, the time is now seven fourteen. The February twenty fifth, twenty twenty-five policy and governance committing, meeting is adjourned.